You'll all rise and join me for the pledge allegiance to our flag, followed by the invocation tonight given by Counselor Wood. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a truly relevant for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible)
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Renninger.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Fink.
Our President, Counting Far, will call the meeting officially to order. The character trait of the month is truthfulness, earning future trust by accurately reporting past facts. Fellow counselors, you should have received copies of the minutes from the special session to canvass the election and the City Council meeting of September the 4th, 2012, as well as the work session of September the 10th, 2012. This time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, saying none, minutes are approved. We're going to deviate from the norm a bit. Been told by our legal counsel that we're going to have to go into executive session as soon as we exhaust the agenda. So we're going to open the floor up for comments from persons present regarding any item of business. It does not have to be on the agenda. It can be, but it does not have to be. So if you have any item of business to bring before the council, please raise your hand to be recognized. Mr. Brand.
Lonnie Brand, 258 Terry Lane. The questions that I have, I was at the work session that was conducted last week, and some of the council members brought up questions that weren't necessarily answered at that work session. So since you're just going to be discussing the budget as part of the thing here tonight, I thought I'd see some of my questions that were raised at the work session, if people had found out answers and what the answers were.
Okay.
Representative Fink asked a question about the Elmore County's use of taxation passed 1 January, what their intentions were. Did you find out any information about what their intentions were?
No, I don't have any insight as to what their intentions are. I would speculate that they certainly have the ability to levy a tax to, and as I understand it, they can do that outside the state legislature if it's earmarked for education. And we all know in budgets, you can take what's otherwise in the general fund and move stuff around so that money that you can, otherwise money that was encumbered, could certainly be freed up if you earmark money for education.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Bowles, you raised the question about city employee positions that were on the books but not field. Did you find out any information about how many there were that's of that category? Or is it just some of the examples you provided?
I've asked our Finance Director, Mr. Mosley, to give me that information. I'm going to leave it alone as of now because Mayor, I was able to get with Mayor Gillespie. It is a line item budget, so they cannot take the funds from that line item and move it to another line item without our approval. So the money, yes, it goes back into the general fund. What I was asking was to simply go ahead and move it over. But if we don't spend it, then the money automatically goes back in, so I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
You mentioned a percentage of the employees' salaries as part of the budget, being a certain level. I think you said 72%, something like that. And so do you still have concern about bringing the percentage of the budget down as far as how much of it represents salaries? Or does it-
No, sir. They handled that in the last two years. The last two years, we were able to bring that number down to a manageable amount. I just don't want to see us get back up to that high amount. And that was my whole thing. And so long we have the hiring freeze on and the council is responsible for hiring new employees, then we can manage that. So as far as I'm concerned, the hiring freeze needs to stay on, and they're giving me, Mayor Gillespie, have already discussed that.
Okay. I think you also mentioned about the concern business owners in the city would have concerning a change in city tax. Did you receive any more input from business owners about that?
I'm glad you asked.
Change?
I've talked to about 15 business owners in the last four days, me being one of them, on the sales tax, and every one of them had the exact same answer. Leave the tax where it is, pay the debts, quit talking about it. Because we need to, they understand, as I understand, as a business owner, we need the city solid and whole. The merchants haven't seen that big of an impact in their sales over the last two years with one cent. They're fine keeping it. They just would, the majority of them I've talked to would like us to handle it, put it out there, be done with it, and quit talking about it and bringing it up in the news.
I noticed that on the agenda, ordinance number two is to amend the city code division sales tax, blah, blah, blah. Does that have to do with extending, changing the tax from reducing it to one half to making it a whole cent for the rest of next year? Is that what that's about? Councilman Wood, you mentioned some concern about a hiring freeze. Still have the same concern, or has it changed since the work session?
My concern is still the same, that the hiring freeze needs to stay in place, and I think the Mayor and I have discussed that along with other council members. I still stand by that.
Okay. So in this proposed budget, is there in discussion of a hiring freeze, or that's not part of the proposed budget?
Ms. Chair, if you'd like.
Yes, right here.
At this particular time, we have a ordinance on the book that states that a hiring freeze is in order. So that's in order until the council lifts it off, this budget, next budget, or any budget.
Okay. So it's still in effect no matter what stands on this budget?
Absolutely.
Unless you make another amendment of some sort?
Right.
In a previous council, there was a previous representative of District Number Three, and he made the statement when I was asking it one time about the city doesn't need a budget. That's just something we're doing to, I'm not sure his full answer, but he made a comment about the city not really needing a budget. So does this current council see a concern for having a past budget, or is it just an isolated case on that previous council member's opinion?
Can only speak for myself, Mr. Brand, but I've always seen the need for a budget, because if you don't have a track to run on, where's the train going to go?
In that regard, when we were at the work session last week, I think the only comment that I took note of from you, Mr. Renninger, was that the budget can be amended at future council meetings.
Absolutely.
But beyond that, I don't think you've said anything. Did I remember that correctly?
That is correct. It's a fluid document. It's my responsibility to make sure that the meeting ran orderly and that we got through the business of the evening, and the other counselors covered my concerns quite adequately.
Okay.
No sense in being redundant and wasting your time in ours, do you know?
Since we're discussing on the agenda, the budget and a few other things, is there any other resolutions, ordinance that's going to be submitted from the floor tonight besides what's on the agenda?
None have been indicated.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. For insightful questions. Would anyone else like to address the council on any matter of business this evening? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Please give your name and address, and then-
My name is Carolyn McLendon, and I live at 370 Selma Highway, Prattville, Alabama.
Good evening, ma'am.
And what I want to talk about today is what happened to me on the streets of Prattville, Alabama, while walking my two dogs, small dogs, and my dogs were attacked. And if I had had time to pick my little one up, I probably would have been attacked. It's two big lab dogs, and I understand they have been out before, and so I feel like the owner certainly has a responsibility of making sure that these dogs are not out anymore. This happened on Monday, September the 10th, around 5:00 PM, walking these dogs. And it happened across the street from 255 East Main Street. That's the address of the owners. And I'm at there screaming like a maniac because these dogs, this dog grabbed her and pulled her out of a harness completely, and it's the most horrendous thing that I have seen in my lifetime, and I'm pretty elderly to have been, you know, not seen that. And this dog was just killing my dog, shaking, and I had another dog to take care of. Two sisters, Amy Sparks and them came running over. It wasn't their dog, but they were familiar with the dogs because they had attacked Amy's dog. And at the same time, a black man named Andre from Clanton stopped, and he rescued my dog. Immediately going up to Dr. Davison's. My puppy, four and a half pounds, was in surgery for three hours. And I'm going to give you all some pictures you can pass around. One was hurt tremendously, the other one was not hurt as bad. So I did what I had to do. I felt like that this needed to be known. I signed warrants for those dogs, and I made several trips to the City Hall, which is quite a chore to try to get these warrants taken care of. Monday night, there was nobody available to take a report. Tuesday, I came down here to give a report with the dog warden, and then I had to give another report at the magistrate's office. And those girls were very nice in helping me with this process. I talked with investigator. I've made, all during the weeks, trips here and trying to get up with the dog warden. I go down to the humane shelter, and he was not there. And in talking with the lady in charge of the humane shelter, he said, she says she heard, "He is my type story much too often." I don't know if those warrants have been served or not. And then I was informed that if these people came down and pleaded guilty, that I would not hear any more about it, only if they pled not guilty. And I would like to know why I would not get notice of the disposition of the case. I have no idea what the ordinance and law says, what kind of penalties there are with this, but these dogs came over with the idea, I mean, I pulled my jockeys up close to my feet to keep them out of danger. And before I could lift the youngest one up, the dog had grabbed it. I feel in my heart that had I had my dog in my arms, that I would have been attacked. The dogs were not barking. My dogs weren't barking. They weren't barking. They just came over and with the intent of getting them there. And I have a report of what happened to these dogs. Punctured lungs and all that. This has traumatized me. I'm a nervous wreck. I'm afraid to think about getting my dogs out. And actually, this dog has a lot of going about getting a whole lot better. She looks pitiful. I got her home this morning, and I hope no other complications set in, but likely there may be. I don't know what her quality of life is going to be after this. And I felt like the county, the council should know what is going on with these dogs. And my question is, we have a dog warden that I understand hours of eight to three. I also understand that, like when I came down here Monday, after I took the dog to the doctor, to make a report to see if I couldn't go ahead and get a warrant or something, there was nobody there to do it, not a policeman or anything. So my question is, can a dog warden do their job with the city, size of this city, and take care of any dogs that are running loose? And also, what are the penalties for somebody whose dogs are getting out? Are they checked to see if there's some special arrangement should not be made to make sure these dogs are in? And I want to commend the girls in the office, Charlotte, Terry, they've been awfully helpful with me, getting me to see the right people, investigator Best, I believe, was the name of one. But I felt like that from what I hear out there, that sometimes these dog incidents are just dropped and not followed through. And so that's my point of making sure. I've been to this City Hall every day for a week, trying to find out what's going on. And I do hope that, and I do file, am going to file for restitution as far as this. Right at the moment, I have a $28, $100 bill and could be possibly more before it's over. So I appreciate you, gentlemen and ladies, listening to this, and hope that you all can take a look at all of these dog ordinance, or, like I say, I don't really know what to say. And it's something that needs to be done in order to have availability of a person coming down here and trying to get something done about it, if it's, you know, if you need another dog warden, or if you can give some indication of a police officer trying to take care of it. Because I was really concerned after Monday that these dogs might be still running loose. And I'm not saying these people that own the dog would intentionally want my dogs to get hurt or anybody else, but since it was a dogs that had gotten out of fencing and attacked another dog, they'll do it again.
The Mayor and the Police Chief have heard your comments, as have we, and believe it. We take everything that you have told us to heart. We understand that this is an ongoing problem in different areas of the city, and I am sure, since the Mayor is in charge of the day-to-day operations of the city, that he will see that something is done. Now, before you leave us, I want to see if any of the other counselors would like to speak to you, if you don't mind.
Right.
Counselor Fink?
Yes, Ms. McLendon. First of all, I'm sorry that that happened. I'm a pet owner as well, and I know how traumatic, or I can imagine how traumatic that could be for you, and then probably the feeling of helplessness that you had as well. I will follow up directly with you. I will be on the phone with Chief and Mayor tomorrow. I did not realize this issue had happened. Otherwise, I would have certainly reached out to you before this. But I will certainly talk to them, you know, personally, if not tonight, tomorrow, I will certainly be in contact with them, and then follow up directly with you. And I, like you, it concerns me also, and I'm certain that I would be shocked if these types of issues get dropped. I don't think our police department is that type of a police department, that they don't take everything serious, all issues, you know, regardless of if it's, I don't think they take, I don't think they make light of any issues or any concerns that the citizens have. So I'll personally follow up with you tomorrow and work towards getting resolution on some of your questions that you have, because candidly, I don't know the answer to some of them myself, as to what the process is. I understand. I think when a dog attacks another dog, they go into, they get put in quarantine for seven days, and there's some other things, or 10 days, and then, you know, rabies, all that kind of stuff. But I'll follow up and get some details and call you tomorrow.
Well, you can imagine, I was out there screaming like a maniac and hoping somebody would stop and help me, and the two ladies across the street came running over there with a baseball bat.
Mm-hmm.
Thank them for that.
Absolutely.
And then this, the black guy stopped and was awfully nice and got his black stick out, got the dog released, and took me to my car at the library. Normally, I park at the library. I live on the Selma Highway. I cannot walk my dogs there, it's too much traffic.
Right.
And I walk them around the park. This time, I thought it was a nice, cool day, we'd go a different direction. And so it's traumatized me as much as my dogs, and I feel like I'm too old to be getting out there screaming like a maniac and not knowing what to do and how to do. So-
You shouldn't have to. You should not have to. So we will, I will follow up with you tomorrow, myself personally, as I'm sure the Mayor probably will, and then Chief probably will also, so.
Mayor, do you have something you'd like to share with us?
Yes, sir. If you'd like to come over here with the Police Chief, he would be glad to give you an up-to-date on some of the findings in your case. And I, again, want to echo some of Counselor Fink's comments, and you know, I know those are part of your family.
They are.
And we've, fortunately, I've not been in your shoes, so to speak, but I have seen, you know, the aftermath of some of that. But anyway, if you would, just step outside with the Police Chief, he'll be glad to give you some updates.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Come forward. Give us your name and your address, and state your business, please.
My name is Keidra Motley, 783 County Road 13, Prattville, Alabama, 36067. The business that I'm here today to address is, I have a potential business partner, and he put in for his liquor license. It was outside, off of 82, it was probably about 15 miles, 15 miles or so out of the city limits. And I was wondering, his name is Jamie Onico Jackson, and I was wondering, you know, what happened with that? Why was he denied? And also that someone within, less than a mile away from the place where we are, they have their liquor license, and, you know, it's all outside of the city limits, and I'm just trying to find out, you know, more about that, why?
Okay.
Why was he denied?
You say it's outside the city limits. Is it within the police jurisdiction, or is it-
Well, it's outside, it's actually outside of the jurisdiction.
Well, then that would be a county matter, not a city.
But they send, I know, but they send it through, I had to come over here to you guys. I don't know why. They denied it, or whatever, and they told me to come here and dispute my-
Who instructed you to do that?
Well, actually, they instructed him, and he wasn't able to get here, so I'm not sure exactly who instructed him.
Okay.
But I'm here standing in his spot tonight because he couldn't make it. So I'm just trying to find out, you know, a little bit more about it, if you have any information.
Can you give the details to our city clerk, and the Police Chief is outside consulting with the lady that talked previously?
Mm-hmm.
I'll get with him, and we'll see if we can find you an answer, because if it's outside the city limits and outside the PJ, it should be a county matter.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll check on it for you. Thank you.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Let me also speak to that issue. We have several applications that have come before us in the past month, and that is not one of them, so I feel sure that that county issue, that's a county issue, and it should be dealt there.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. Anyone else like to weigh in on that? Would anyone else like to address the City Council on any item of business this evening? Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and address and your business, please.
My name is Philip Baker, 122 North Nickel Street. I'd like to address, Mr. Bowles, I think I've talked to you on the phone about the situation at 137 North Nickel Street, about how trashy it is, about the fact that the streets in that area are not designed for cars to park on the street. They need to be in a driveway, in my opinion. And when you're going down the street from 14, going south, there are two vehicles, or two or three vehicles, on the right-hand side of the road that always park on that side of the road. And when oncoming traffic is going up North Nichols to 14, and the one's coming down, there's been several mishaps, almost, you know, an accident happened. I've seen a lady riding a bicycle, almost got run over. And these people that live there, they just thumb their nose because the rule is, or the law, or whatever it is, if you park your vehicle pointing in that direction, there's no law that prohibits them from being on the street. Well, I'd like to propose that we change that, or see what we can do. These particular people's properties is a major drop-off on that side. When you, it's literally the road, and to the right of it, it is a literal washout drop-off. I've watched a car come down that, they must have been just either texting or something or not paying attention, but I actually saw a car go off that side, scrape the bottom of their car, you know, because it's that, you know, and they missed the mailbox by inches. inches, but they kept going. I don't know how far the city's obligation is to fill any of that, or if it's the owner or what, but that house at 137 North Nichols and the one next to it is just, it's horrible and it's making our city, it's making that neighborhood look like Thugville. I don't want that. Prattville's all, I've been here all my life, it's been a great city, and I don't want to see it going downhill. And I just wish there was something we could do to keep those cars from parking on the side of the road.
After we talked, I think it was right before the ballgame?
Yes, sir.
I did run by there that night. I talked to the sergeant over third shift, because I have a direct line to him.
Okay.
They have been patrolling that a lot better.
Yes.
Trying to keep the partying and the noise down. The cars, it seems like I looked at that when I first came on with Mr. Duke. I can't hardly remember. It's been, it's done so much, but legally, there's nothing we can do with cars parked on the street, is there? If it's in the right direction, Mr. Duke?
Cars are allowed to be parked on the street. I believe that it be considered abandoned, it's 48 hours at least, and the police department could address that better. They're the ones responsible for doing that.
He's sitting outside, yeah.
I'm sorry. Well, the issue is, though, if you say in 48 hours, there's always a car there. There may be a different car, there may be two, one's moved, one's not, but they'll sit out there all night, you know, and then there's another one that takes its place during the day.
And this might change, but Denise is over streets right now, and maybe we could get together the next couple of weeks and see if there's something we can address to shorten the timelines.
Okay.
On people parking on the streets, but the other matters of the partying and the...
Yeah, the loud noise, the, I mean, it's just, and the property, the way it looks, it's, I mean, the street itself, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if it's...
The street's going to be a little bit harder to handle than the partying and the look. So the partying and all that is being looked at, especially Friday and Saturday nights, and I know that for sure because of the third shift captain, or sergeant on third shift's keeping me up to date on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, and I do appreciate the police department coming in there and sitting there and watching, maybe I gave a secret to everybody else behind me, but, you know, they need to stop flying down that road.
Right.
Everybody uses that as a main drag in the mornings to get to work, to get to 14, to go to 65, because everybody's going to Montgomery, same way. But, I mean, if possible, we ought to have an officer sitting down there at 7:00. One, there's school buses.
That's right.
That go between the corner of Wright and Nichols. And another is people just fly up that street, and that, it's a main artery, and it's just, I just wish it would stop.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council on any item of business this evening? Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir, and I hope everybody voted today. If you haven't, you still have about 25 minutes or so. I know I did, but that's one of our rights that I hope everybody has taken advantage of already. But just a couple little things that we have going on for this week, and it's the LPGA. If anybody, the tournament itself has not started yet, but there's already some practicing going on, and see a lot of RVs and other other items coming in. It's been a boost for our economy. Also, come Monday, the 24th, we'll have our checks presentation for the Coca-Cola Challenge. Hope everybody can show up at Pratt Park, 10:00 for that, and we hope to have a real good event on that.
Mr. Renninger, I know that, Council President Renninger, I know you're an Eagle Scout, and I know you're very well aware that this is the 100 years of Eagle Scouts, and I want to commend you for, as you corrected me once before, once an Eagle Scout, always Eagle Scout. So you're part of that 100-year tradition there. Somebody told me once that you were there for the first year of their celebration, so that has not been verified, but we're still looking for that. Also, it's the 65th birthday for the United States Air Force, so it's just another little milestone, and another one that, the very near future, above my seat over here, you'll see a, we're going to hang the Constitution, and this is the 225th year for our nation's Constitution. So you will be seeing it hanging up shortly over my chair, my little box that you guys have so kindly placed me in. But getting along to our agenda, trying to make this a short meeting the best that I can, on resolution number one, I hope that all questions have been answered. I hope that it can be seen fit that this budget will pass. I think it's a very, very well-balanced budget. There's been a lot of hard work put into it by the, by department heads throughout the city, from myself, I think from the council also. So I think it's a document that's worthy of the city, and I hope that you guys will see fit to pass it as is. On ordinance number two, I'm going to request, humbly request that you hold it and also have a public hearing and/or work session on this one. On resolution number three, I want to commend Counselor Fink for putting this on the agenda. I think that the training facility would be a very good place for Chief Stanley Gann to have his name placed, and anyway, if you can move forward on the ones I've requested and hold the ones that I've requested to be held. Besides that, I hope that I'll see everybody, each and every one of you guys, out at Robert Trent Jones during this next coming week for our, for the LPGA tournament.
Do any of the council members have any questions or comments from our former mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll move to our financial report by our city finance director, Mr. Mosley. Good evening, Mr. Mosley. We're only accepting good news tonight.
Well, hopefully I can give you some of that. It's nice to see everyone tonight. The first sheet in the packet, of course, is the revenue by group. Pretty much the same story as we've seen the last several months. Lodging tax is still trending lower than where we should be in the year. Also, rental tax is a little bit low. Pretty much everything else is right in line. You'll see that we are 90.56 percent, we've received 90.56 percent of our budgeted revenue for the year, but we're only 83.33 percent through the year. So that's very good trend. We're trending ahead overall. The next sheet you will have in your packet is a tax breakdown comparison. This I provide to everyone at the beginning of every month, show the differences, actual and organically, on all of these sales taxes. The next sheet in your packet is the expense report by department. On the expenses, we are 91.67 percent through the year. You will notice going through there that just about every single department is spending less of their budget than where they should be if they were going to spend all of it through the year, so that's very positive. So we're being very frugal with the money, and more money's coming in than expected at this point. The next two sheets in the packet are the wastewater enterprise fund income statement and the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. You will notice that those two departments are still running in the black, and they are in line with their budget so far this year.
Any questions of Mr. Mosley from the council members? Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Very good report. Let's keep it positive. We'll move into committee reports from the council members. Counselor Striplin, do you have a report? Counselor Wood, do you have a report?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a committee report, but if you'll allow me a point of privilege, I'd like to make a statement, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I had planned to make this statement a little bit later, sometime in October, but an article came out in September, I believe, September 8th, so I'm going to go ahead and make it now. I want to take this opportunity again, first to thank God for allowing me to serve on the private city council. Also, I want to thank everyone who supported me. We have a tremendous amount of work and important decisions to deal with. The September 8th private progress ran an article concerning filling the post of president of the city council. I was approached about becoming council president before I knew I would be re-elected to the council. This was from a fellow council member. I have been approached by others asking me, "Are you going to be president? Have you called other council members? Do you have four votes to be president?" So tonight at this public meeting, I wanted to be known that I have never, not once, did any political jockeying or maneuvering for the president's seat or president pro temp seat, of which both I have held during my time on this council. As you know, and as I stated in the private progress, the seven-member council elects the president. So I take this opportunity to congratulate every council member elected, and I notice I see council member elect stars both and chambers in the audience tonight. Congratulations to you all. And I ask each council member for their support of me as president of the council. If selected, I will do my best to serve the council and the city well. Pray God's blessing upon each of you and this city as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the point of privilege.
Yes, sir. Counselor Wood? Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Fink?
No, sir.
All right. We will move to our consent agenda. I'll ask Counselor Brown to present the consent agenda and to move for adoption if she so desires. Counselor Brown?
Thank you. Resolution one, to waive the fee for the Ataga County Fair Association. Resolution two, to amend resolution book 2009A, page 056, and to reappoint Gene R. Cannavon to the Education Building Authority. Resolution three, to reappoint Danny Lofton to the Education Building Authority. Resolution four, to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. And resolution number five, to grant an off-premise retail beer and off-premise retail table wine license to Terrence Corrigan of Alabama CVS Pharmacy LLC, doing business as CVS Pharmacy 4944. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Counselor Brown has moved the consent agenda for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Is there any discussion about the motion to approve a consent agenda? Counselor Fink?
Just one very quick comment, and I'd recommend this to the next council, that probably, I would recommend that we change the resolution for the fair to an ordinance by nature, because I don't think, in the eight years I've been here, there's never been any serious consideration to not waive the fee, and that would just make it permanent in nature, and we wouldn't have to address this every year, I think it would be, if that could be done. But that's my only comment.
Okay. Any other comments about the motion to adopt? Those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? The consent agenda is adopted. Item number one on the regular agenda is a resolution to adopt the City of Prattville fiscal year 2012-2013 general operating fund budget. Counselor Wood is a senior member of this council. I would ask for you to introduce this resolution, please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows. Therefore, the purpose of financing the conduct of affairs of the city of Prattville, Alabama during the period October 1, 2012, and end in September 30, 2013, inclusive the general operating fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, sanitation enterprise fund, and wastewater enterprise fund budgets for the city's revenues and expenditures for such period as prepared and submitted to the council by the mayor are hereby approved and adopted as the official fiscal year 2012-2013 budgets for the city of Prattville, Alabama, with a combined total of $36,922,933.92. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved the adoption of this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Any amendments to be offered? Those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none? The resolution is adopted, and so is the budget for this next fiscal year. Item number two is an ordinance to amend the city code Division 2 Sales Tax Section 38-92 Imprint C, imposition of certain sales and use tax. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please? Excuse me, ordinance, introduce the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Be it ordained that the city code Division 2 Sales Tax Section 38-92 is hereby amended as follows. Section 38-92, imposition of additional tax. A, in addition to the taxes set forth in Section 38-91, there shall be an additional 1% tax levied under Section 38-91, Paragraph 1, 2, and 6, commencing on May 1, 2011, and ending at such time as repealed by the city council of the city of Prattville. B, the tax collected under this section herein after deduction for expenses of collection shall be expended only for debt service and for the funding of reserve accounts. This additional 1% tax shall not be used to provide any future economic incentives after the adoption of this ordinance, or any future economic incentives not already in existence at the time of adoption of this ordinance. This ordinance shall become effective upon the passage and execution as provided by law. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved the adoption of this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wood. By point of order, this ordinance will lay over to our next regularly scheduled meeting, unless there is a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion?
Call for a motion.
Counselor Wood has moved for the suspension of the rules. Is there a second? Is there a second to the move for the suspension of the rules? Hearing none, the move for the suspension dies, and this item will carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be October the 2nd. Item number three is a resolution naming the Prattville Fire Training Facility and Fire Tower in honor of former fire chief Stanley Gann. Counselor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, I certainly will, with great pleasure. Whereas the city council of the city of Prattville would like to name the Prattville Training, excuse me, the Prattville Fire Training Facility and Fire Tower in honor of former fire chief Stanley Gann. And whereas the former chief Stanley Gann began his career with the Prattville Fire Department in 1981 as a firefighter. And whereas Chief Gann progressed through the ranks and became sergeant slash driver operator in 1983, lieutenant in 1985, captain in 1991, and fire chief in 1997, and served in that capacity until he retired in 2011. And whereas the department made significant progress under his leadership and guidance, and Chief Gann was instrumental in securing the land for the Prattville Fire Training Facility and Fire Tower. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the Prattville Fire Training Facility and Fire Tower located at 290 Eklund Boulevard and 350 County Road 4 are hereby named Stanley Gann Fire Training Facility and Stanley Gann Fire Tower. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowles. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Fink?
I just want to make one comment. I did reach out to Chief Gann, obviously. He is in, he is out of town, otherwise he certainly would have been here at the meeting tonight, and he is very humbled by the consideration, so, thank you.
Any further discussion by the council on this proposed resolution? Counselor Miller?
I would just echo, as chairman of the fire committee for the past several years, I had worked with Chief Gann on this and a lot of other fire department-related activities, and I commend you, Counselor Fink, for bringing this forward, and I wholeheartedly support it as a well-deserved...
it as a well-deserved recognition for his service to the city.
Any further comments by the council? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. Resolution is adopted unanimously. Item number four is an ordinance to surplus three vehicles from the Police Department. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicles listed below are hereby declared surplus of the Police Department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. 2000 Chevy Impala, 2001 Chevy Impala, 1998 Ford Crown Victoria. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicles on govdeals.com. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Counselor Brown has moved this ordinance for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wood. By point of order, this ordinance will lay over to our next regularly scheduled meeting, unless there is a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
Moved by Counselor Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Wood. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the rules are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the ordinance is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one police officer for the Police Department at an annual cost not to exceed $51,964. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need to hire one police officer, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed $51,964 for salary and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $51,964 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one police officer, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2012 budget line items, police department salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand?
Counselor Miller?
Yes, sir.
That's not a budgeted item, so you're gonna have to...
It is not a budgeted item, okay.
Is it?
It's my understanding that it was.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay, we're moving right along here. I'd rather err on the side of caution. Thank you, David. All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to award a contract in the amount of $6,300 to Alvin Thomas Incorporated to complete the demolition of 1085 South Memorial Drive. Counselor Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council adopted Resolution Book 2011A, page 84, on December 20, 2011, to award a contract to Scotty Floor Covering for demolition of the structure located at 1085 South Memorial Drive, and whereas Scotty's floor covering has failed to meet the terms or the timeline set forth in said contract, and whereas Scotty's floor covering has submitted a request to the Prattville Planning Department to be released from said contract, now therefore be resolved that the City of Council of the City of Prattville hereby award a contract in the amount of $6,300 to Alvis Thompson to complete the demolition of the structures located at 1085 South Memorial Drive, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FYI 2012 budget line item, Planning Department slash demolition house demolition. I so move.
Counselor Bowes has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Striplin. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Bowes?
I just would like to point out, so everybody in the audience and other council members know, that Scotty's floor covering was not paid any money on this. Am I right on that, Joe? Mr. Duke?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They failed to complete the contract as required, and actually got into liquidated damages and ended up with no payment.
And then the other item, the original bid was over $7,000?
The original contract approved by the previous resolution was $7,250, and this is...
So we're saving $950 going this way, I expect?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to accept donation of property from the heirs of WF Huey. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the Huey Estate has certain property it wishes to donate to the City of Prattville, and whereas this donation would be beneficial to the citizens of Prattville for future use, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby accepts the donation of property located at Lot 4, Block 2 of the Woodland Heights subdivision, Platte 2, as recorded on November 23, 1956, Book 2, Page 106, in the office of the Otoga County Judge of Probate from the heirs of WF Huey. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowes. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I, this, Joe, you can answer this. It's good for people to donate property. I just want to be sure, has a planning report been done? Has the planning department looked at the property to see if it's something that will benefit or not be a benefit to the city?
Yes, sir. This is a fairly rugged piece of property that has been vacant since the subdivision was platted in 1956. It's located, it contains a drainage way that the city has had issues with over the years there off of Cooper Avenue. The city has acquired through a hazard mitigation project the property on the opposite side of the street, and this property being offered, which we didn't go seeking, but the Huey Estate offered it to us, but it allows us to have better access to this drainage way. And it seems that we'd be better in the city's hands for that purpose than given to the adjacent property owners. We see no, we see nothing but benefits from having this property.
Counselor Miller?
My question was addressed. Thank you.
Any other questions pertaining to this resolution, or proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one equipment operator truck driver of, for the Sanitation Department at annual cost not to exceed $35,963. Counselor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the City of Prattville Sanitation Department has a need to hire one equipment operator truck driver to fill a vacancy, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed an annual cost of $35,963 for salary and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $35,963 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one equipment operator truck driver, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2012 budget line items, sanitation enterprise fund, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance group, life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Had a simultaneous second there. Let's put Counselor Striplin on there as a second. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? I see none, resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one service maintenance worker for the Sanitation Department at an annual cost not to exceed $31,532. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Sanitation Department has a need to hire one service maintenance worker to fill a vacancy, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed an annual cost of $31,532 for salary and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $31,532 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one service maintenance worker, one, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 budget line items, sanitation enterprise fund slash salary and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is hereby authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Counselor Brown has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Fink. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? I see none, the resolution is adopted. Item number 10 is a resolution to authorize additional funding totaling $29,500 for Hazard Mitigation Project 1835-0011 for acquisition and removal of flood-prone properties. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas in 2009, the City of Prattville applied for a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant available with the Federal Disaster Declaration 1835, and whereas a $267,030 grant has been sub-allocated by the Alabama Emergency Management Agency to the City of Prattville for the acquisition and removal of three flood-prone properties in the city limits, and whereas this grant was available to the city upon commitment of at least 25% in matching funds in the amount of $89,010. Whereas the City Council authorized the expenditure of the required matching funds by Resolution Book 2011-A, page 83, on December 20, 2011, and whereas additional expenditures are required to meet the conditions of the grant and complete the project. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and approves an additional $29,500 for the completion of the Hazard Mitigation Project Number 1835-011 for acquisition and removal of flood-prone properties, and funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 budget line item, Planning Department, miscellaneous contract services. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this item, this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowes. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Carries six to one. It's adopted. This time, Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
No.
Counselor Striplin?
No, sir.
Counselor Wood?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Miller?
Just briefly shared with the mayor and others, I voted this morning, and one of the poll workers voiced her appreciation for my service, and then she said, "While you're still on the clock, can I get you to follow up on an issue?" Fortunately, it was a relatively minor issue, but I placed a call, talked to Teresa. I'm calling in a work order, can you handle it? And it probably wasn't an hour, I got an email that it had been taken care of. And I know that was probably quicker or faster than the average, but I thought it was very symbolic of the commitment and dedication of our city workforce, so I take this opportunity to not only thank Teresa, but also the city staff that was involved. Appreciate that, and I know the constituent does.
Counselor Bowes?
No, sir. Just one quick comment, though, about the LPGA. I hope to see everybody out there this week. I was out there this afternoon for a few minutes and was talking to a group of golfers, and one of the ladies did comment on how friendly the city was, how friendly the city staff is, and she just kept on and on about the city staff and how wonderful everything was, and she had questions, and it was just handled really quick, like, and they were very, looking very forward to the rest of the week, because it looked like it was going to be perfect weather for golf. So I hope I see y'all there. Thank y'all.
Counselor Fink? To honor the request of the mayor, I am going to ask the city clerk to schedule a public hearing on the ordered, the proposed ordinance that will be before us on October the 2nd. Public hearing will start at 6:00 PM on October the 2nd, and we'll have the public hearing prior to our regular meeting on that evening. And that'll be expressly for the proposed ordinance to extend the sales tax.
At 6:00.
6:00 o'clock. Counselor Fink?
Motion to go into executive session.
So move. Counselor Fink has moved that we go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowes. Counselor Miller?
Do we need to include the fact that we're not going to reconvene, or is your intent that we reconvene?
We will not reconvene when we get through with our executive session. I was going to get to that, but it's a good thing that you jumped ahead and reminded me of it.
And the reason I'm asking is, we did it a couple of meetings ago, and I just, my question is whether or not it needs to be a part of the motion, since we need to agree that we're not reconvening. Just a question.
You want to amend that motion? Or ask Counselor Fink to amend that motion?
I will amend the motion to reflect what Councilman Miller just said.
I second.
And I'm right, city clerk, because we actually, I made, that's why I amended, did the amendment before, to correct that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you read back the motion in the second place, so we all clear, have a clear understanding?
The motion is to enter executive session and adjourn at the end of the executive
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of moving into an executive session and adjournment afterwards signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? We will go into executive session. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll see you on October the 2nd.